Welcome. This is the September 10th, 2025, meeting of the Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals. It's being held via Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees, please note that your image, voice, or and telephone number may be recorded for the record. Let me introduce the board. Please raise your hand when I call your name. Jim Royer.
Yep.
Denny Bartlett.
Yeah.
Ginny Zakatinsky.
Here.
Susanna Roberts.
Here.
I'm Lynn Ryan. And Leanne Leahy is the Administrative Assistant for the ZBA. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and I will open the hearing or which one comes first? Let's see, 7 o'clock?
136 Central.
Yeah, continuation of 136 Central Street for a special permit. Has every, has everyone received and looked at the new site plan that was sent by the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Does the petitioner wish to make a statement or tell us about what's going on?
Got to give him a minute to get his camera and microphone on.
Hello, hi, everybody.
Hi there. Ross Les, thank you for your efforts on behalf of meeting our needs. We thank you for that. Is there something that you'd like to tell us about? How things turned out, what you've done, what the result is?
Yes, so Ross Associates have come out and they have added parcel A for the property, which is 10,005 square feet.
Okay. Is this something that has to be approved by the planning board? Before it can be recorded? I would suggest to the, to my committee that they not make this a stumbling point because if we were, and we have, you know, there has been no vote as yet. But if we were to grant your request for a home-based contracting business, the it's only for five years. So we, you know, we could ask you to do something in the meantime and not be that concerned because you'd have five years and you'd have to come before us again if you hadn't completed it. But I suggest to you that in order, this would have to be recorded as part of your other lot.
Yes.
From what I understand.
Yes, I, I, I understand that as well, the same.
And in order to do that, I think it has to be, it won't have to be approved from what I understand. And again, I do not know all of the rules and regulations. But from what I understand, the planning board just has to sign off that they don't have to. In other words, you're not violating the bylaw by moving this piece of land. But what we could do if the board chooses and if they decide that this is the special permit should be granted, we could make it a condition of the special permit that you have it recorded and which that may mean, and again, you would have to ask the planning board or even ask your, the folks that drew up the plans. I think the planning board has to sign off on it in order for you to be able to record it.
Yeah.
Having said that, is there anything else that you'd like to tell us about what you've done? You've added percentages here, you've added 10,000 square feet, what's the total area and so forth?
I'm not, well. So it is three, I don't know what the total square area is other than 3.02 acres plus 10,000 square feet, which is three and a quarter approximately.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is you would now fall into the category where you would have two vehicles and a trailer.
Oh, yeah.
And I forget the number of employees for that square footage.
Three, so we, we have the, we still have the three guys and Jared is going to take his name off of one of the trucks. So if we take the name off one of the trucks, then we only have two trucks with names. And then that truck will just be a nameless truck. And then it just can park in our driveway.
It would be a farm truck, I'm assuming?
It, that is the truck that would be used, the primary truck for the farm.
Yeah. Would have the name.
But my name will not be on it.
No.
Nor Berlin Orchards.
Yeah.
So you can live with three people in two trucks?
Yes.
Do you have a trailer?
Yes.
Okay. You've read in the bylaw what the weight limits are and so forth. What we would, would be put two trucks and then we would put the maximum weight. Anything else you'd like to tell us?
No, other than that we will put screening in when we tear the house down, right there on the edge of the lawn.
Where the house was.
Okay, because you realize that there, there would be no outdoor storage?
No.
Yeah. Yes, that's we.
No, I mean, like.
There will, there will be no outdoor storage.
Maybe, maybe one of the trucks outside, but no, no things.
No, no.
Yeah.
In addition to the trucks, I'm talking about lumber or I'm talking about piles of wood chips or I'm, you know, that sort of thing.
No.
No.
Okay. Anyone on the board have questions for the petitioner?
Uh, I'm just trying to do the math here, the 3.02 acres into feet. And then the 10,005 square feet is the intent to get it to 80,000 square feet?
It's already 80,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, not, not 80,000. What do we need? We need four acres.
Let me just double check.
Well, I guess the question is, what was the intent of adding the 10,005 square feet?
Because they wanted to have two trucks. And with 80,000 square feet, according to our bylaw, they would only be allowed one.
Okay, so what's the total square foot once parcel A becomes part of the main 3.02 acres?
All right, you'd have to add 10,000 to whatever three point, whatever acres are.
How many square feet are in 3,000, 3.02 acres?
Little over 150,000 square feet and 10,000 brought us up over 160.
I think the, the original thing, we were suggested to get to put 8,000 square feet by the board. And we just decided to do 10, just for good measure. If we were going to do this, let's do that. And then
Yes.
Have a little padding. So I think by 10,000, we do, we do hit the number.
The key is 160.
Yes.
But this only gives you 141. I think that's where, why I'm confused.
Well, if it's 150 at the 3.02 and 10 added to that is 160.
Um, one acre is 43,560 square.
That, then it's not 150.
That's, that's why I'm very confused.
I don't have the bylaws with me with the number, but I'm pretty, pretty sure that everyone agreed that 8,000 square feet would have added enough to, to make the, so we didn't do the math, we were just going on that. So I don't have the math done here.
So who was everyone?
The square footage was on the original petition, as I remember, on, on their plot plan. And I'm just looking at the home-based contracting business. And we are looking at greater than 160,000 square feet and greater than 300 feet of frontage. You get two registered vehicles, less than 26,000 pounds gross vehicular weight and a trailer less than 12,000 square pounds.
Yes, I, I understand that. What I don't understand is what the total square footage is of the parcel once you add parcel A.
Susanna, may I ask, do you know 0.02, how many square feet are in that?
Well, when I did the math, I did 43,560 square feet times 3.02, which came out to 131,551.2 square feet. And then adding 10,005 square feet brings it the total to 141,
Yeah.
So that's, it would be nice to, to have something in writing that says that their square footage was 150 before they added parcel A.
3.02.
Well, how, how could you add? You'll have the initial 3.02, then add the 10,000.
That's what I did.
The map, the map that came with the initial petition said that 136 Central Street is 3.5 acres.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then there's, then this is what I'm getting at. There must be a mistake on what was sent to us because it now says 3.02, not 0.5.
She, you, you, yes, you're right. And I think that might be, if I go back, I'm sorry that I don't have the original. I can go look for the application, but that's what she's saying is Ross put it here as 3.02. I remember in our original conversations going at 3.5. You're, you're right. And so I, I can go back, I'll go look now.
Yeah, that's. The original one submitted with the application does say 3.5 acres.
Yeah, I have it in front of me.
So maybe.
That's what we went upon when we were talking to the petitioner last month. That there is 3.5 acres.
So my concern is this, this, what we have right now, which says 3.02 must be corrected before it gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds.
Yes. She's right.
Okay.
Um, I, I'm sorry that this is kind of archaic. This is the original one that Ross gave us. Can you read that? Am I backwards?
I can read that. Yeah, no, you're forwards.
I'm okay?
Yeah.
So that was the original plot that Ross gave us and I'm, I don't know why this is. We got to talk to this guy about this, but why that, that number is wrong here because this is from, from him. So that would make sense why that original conversation happened with the 3.5.
Yeah, that does make a lot more sense.
Yeah. And then I remember, so that was, the idea was and Jared and I were just saying, I remember talking about that, saying, well, if we're going to do this, we might as well just add more just for padding, just for, you know, because we're here. And if we're going to register and, and then deed it and all those things, that, that's, that was the logic on our, our end. But so we can, we can correct that and with Ross, I'll send them a message tonight.
Okay. Thank you. That was, that was all. I just wanted to make sure that it was correct before going forward.
Yeah.
Well, did Ross do the original print?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So he's got two different sizings on the two different, on the same lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if he, the, the original one that was submitted lists a reference to a plot plan from a, a book. So I'm guessing he probably just went and pulled that originally from whatever the town has. And then when he went back and redid it, he probably actually measured and did an actual survey.
Yeah.
And that's probably why there's a difference there.
Well, that, that could be a problem though, if.
Yeah, it could be.
Well, every problem has a solution. So let's see if there's anything else other than the size of the lot.
Well, could we add more? Yeah.
I think.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna close my video and I'm gonna go on to the town's assessor's website and see if I can get a number there.
Excellent ideas, Suzanne. Thank you.
All right, I'll be right back.
Does anyone have any other questions about what the petitioner is doing? We want screening and the petitioner has said that they're going to do screening as soon as the building is existing building on the left-hand side is demolished.
Call him?
And they're going to make screens from any other or butter the vehicles because those are supposed to be, you know, either by trees or whatever. They do not have to be inside, but they do need to be screened. So if they were, let's say, at the back of the garage and you had trees in back of the garage.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a whole forest of trees at the back of the garage between ourselves and the neighbor.
I understand. You have quite a forest. And Berlin's looking for forests now, I understand, since the tornado.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see if there's any other regulations in here that we need to concern ourselves with. Home-based contracting. You have a certificate with the town, do you, for your business?
I guess. Yes.
And again, the, when they talk about the employees, it's non-residents. So if you had a relative living with you that also worked for you, I'm assuming that wouldn't count. The external appearance and general aspect of the building so used shall be conformity with the residential character of the neighborhood. I would include agricultural residential. So if it's farm use, the business shall be compatible with any potentially affected residential premises. Machinery and incidental materials used in the conduct of the business is stored outside shall be completely screened from public view. Such screening shall, at a minimum, comply with the standards for screening with parking and loading areas in section 632. That's what I was just addressing is being able to screen those vehicles used in the business. The number and size of vehicles stored are used on the property that are, in addition to the resident and employee private vehicles, shall not exceed the number in size, and we talked about that, that are in the table in 541. Hours of activity shall be restricted from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM. There shall be no signs except for an address sign. In other words, you know, you can't hang a shingle out there advertising your business. And again, the duration of the permit would be for five years. So I think if we resolve this issue of the square footage, we can say that you have met everything that puts you in the greater than six, 160,000 square feet. And that is two registered vehicles and one registered trailer. Does anyone have any other questions about screening or?
Suzanne is back. Have we got anything there?
I don't have happy news. The assessor's card says 3.02 acres.
Okay.
By five, be the old marble statement, maybe?
Well, I, I think, no. I think they carved out a house lot when they divided up all the property. But I can't be sure because I didn't pay attention, to be honest. I'm speaking, I'm speaking about stuff I don't know about. I should just shut up.
Can we make this big?
I think as far as the petitioner is concerned, we have put them through hoops.
Yes.
I think that we do have to adhere to what is in the table. And I think their issue is with Ross. Because Ross has come at one point and said your 3.5 and both you and the board went ahead based on the plot plan that they had provided. And then they come back with this new plot plan the other day and it now says it's not 3.5, which again is what the assessors say. So how does the board feel about being a little artful about this?
Can we make the wording of the motion to say contingent upon the final square footage being 106, a minimum of 160,000 square feet?
Sounds good.
How does the rest of the board feel about that?
I think it sounds reasonable.
That way they can move forward without having to come back to us.
Right.
I am okay with that, with that wording.
Thank you.
All right, how about if I do this? Allow me to make a motion that we approve the special permit with the condition that they have 90 days to resolve the issue and get the plot over 160,000 square feet and record that with the Register of Deeds.
Does someone like to make a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? This is, this is to authorize the special permit for home-based contract contracting business at 136 Central Street, provided that the petitioner within 90 days produces a plot plan providing a hun, over 160,000 square feet for the lot on which the business resides. Does that seem reasonable to everybody on the board?
Well, when you say over Lynn, I, I guess literally I think of that as over. But it has to be at least a minimum of 160.
The bylaw says greater than 160 square feet and greater than 300 feet of frontage.
I stand corrected.
I, I just don't want to get into another technicality for these folks.
Oh, okay. I don't either. Okay.
Is the 90 days adequate for the petitioner?
I, I hope so. I think so, yes. I mean, we will contact Ross and it's their mistake. So, and then we have to just, I would need to go before the planning board before we get.
I believe so.
Yeah.
I believe so, to get the, to get that land moved from one lot to the other lot.
Yeah.
All, all I think they need to do is say that subdivision is not required or that their signature is not required, but they have to sign it.
Okay.
In other words, I don't think you're facing like a hearing or anything. I think you're facing a meeting and, and again, you'll have to talk to them.
Okay, if we have any trouble with any of this, we'll just keep you posted on, on the, on the status of, of what's going on.
How about, does anyone on the board object to changing the 90 days to 120 days?
I don't.
No, no objection.
Okay, if the, if the motion maker and the second would choose to modify the motion, that would be acceptable?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So now the motion reads, as we said before, only instead of 90 days, it's affording them 120 days. So that's I would think you would either be able to take Ross to court or do something within 120 days.
Yes.
And I, I would be very surprised. They do a lot of work in Berlin that this is, to my way of thinking, their era. So.
A long time with them. We've, we've, we've done a lot of work with them, so.
Yes, but Steve Sears retired, so.
Yeah.
I probably wouldn't tell them they have 120 days. I'd probably tell them they have 60.
Need it now. Yeah.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
I wouldn't even tell them that you got the permit.
No.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion? I'm assuming that we will include those provisions that are in the bylaw to screening and, and so forth.
All the stated provisions.
Exactly. Thank you. And I'll, I'll number them out. You understand this will be a five-year permit?
Yes.
Yes.
And that you just have to come back or renew it?
Yes.
Okay. Being that there are no objections or additions or changes to the motion that was made, I'll do a roll call, vote. Denny?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I'm an aye too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim. Jim's an aye, so it's a unanimous vote. Thank you for your cooperation to both of our petitioners here. And we're sorry, but that's what happened, the difference in the two. And you can also tell them the fact that we didn't get the second one until just before we were meeting, you know, it would, we may have been able to avoid this. Okay, I thank you very much and I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
We're moved. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll take a roll call. Denny?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Suzanne?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, Jim?
And Ginny, aye.
And Ginny, aye. Okay, we got everybody. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
We've got just a couple of minutes before we have our next hearing. Do we have minutes that we need to approve?
Yeah, minutes from August 13th.
So could I have a motion to approve or alter the minutes of August 13th?
I wasn't there.
I'm moved.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ginny. Is there, is there a second?
Okay.
Denny seconded. A motion's made a second to approve as submitted. I'll take a roll call vote. I assume that Jim, you're going to abstain or?
Correct.
Uh, Denny?
Aye.
Uh, Susanna?
Was I here? Yeah, I think I was. Yeah, sure.
And let's see, we've got Jim and Denny and Susanna.
Ginny, yeah, I said yes. Yeah, you gotta do Ginny.
Ginny, aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. Okay, we've done the minutes. Anything else that we could do? I'll save it till later, but I went to the planning board meeting last night. It was interesting. But we want more time for that. Any other communication, Leanne, that you're aware of?
No.
I'll just mention to the board briefly that one of the residents of Whitney Estate, I spent about an hour on the phone with today. It's not the first time she's contacted us. I've tried gently to tell her that we are not an enforcement agency. I've tried gently to tell her that we are not an enforcement agency or FODB's, that it has to be through other means. Um, and, uh, I tried to be as gentle as I could. I understand she, you know, has a great deal on her plate right now. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know that I have talked to her. Okay, are we approaching seven thirty?
Yes, it's seven thirty-two.
Okay.
Um, Lynn, before you officially open the next hearing, I do want to, um, make it put, have it on record that the petitioner did mail the public hearing notice by the, the deadline and also it was published in, um, a local publication by the deadline.
Excellent.
Okay, and now I'll move the petitioner to the, on the, uh, panel. And it's seven thirty-two, so you can start the hearing.
We're doing great, folks.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Very good. Are you here for the other people that are in attendance?
Um, I think the only person that I would really need to speak for me would be Antonio Mancini, who's running this one for me.
You are the petitioner from sixty-eight, uh, from Derby, right?
Yes, ma'am. But he's my expert on the zoning, so.
All right, Lynn, would you like me to promote him to panelist?
Would you please?
Good evening, members.
Good evening. And could you repeat your name for the record, please?
Name's, uh, Antonio Mancini, or Tony Mancini for short, uh, with prestige.
All right, Mr. Mancini, would you like to make a presentation to the Board of Appeals?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, if I may.
I suggest to you strongly, you being a zoning expert, you're aware of what we need to find from chapter forty-eight, section ten, the variances. We are very stringent in what we need to find for that property, and we would appreciate it if you could provide us with the information we need to meet that criteria. All right, Mr. Mancini, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, again, Tony Mancini, prestige. Um, tonight before you, sixty-eight Derby Road is a request for a variance to construct a extract, accessory structure, um, which happens to land about nine foot, uh, I believe nine foot six of the back right-hand corner, uh, section of the front is actually conforming. Based on the land survey that was provided, you can see that the, uh, property has a deck that was constructed that, uh, to, to move would be extremely costly as well as trying to retain that size structure would actually be put over the septic, which is not, uh, the best uh, operation for any household. Um, also trying to, you know, we looked at this a couple of different ways to maybe try and pull it forward, but you don't really want accessory structure forward, or, you know, if you can't kind of match the house, trying to pair it with the house wasn't really an option for the, the client. We also thought about trying to push it back, but any way that we pushed it, turned it, we wouldn't be able to get the size and we would end up running into, um, issues with the septic moving the deck. Um, thought about even putting it further back and then you, I mean, you would need a car to go from that back garage to your house. That's how far away it would have to be. Um, so what makes your property so unique? It, it ends up being the, uh, the way that lot was cut. It pushes itself to the left, cuts back, and then kind of small flag lot in the back. Um, I would say financial hardship, another criteria would be if we were to even try and move, shrink the deck. We would have to take it down. We even thought about potentially diverting the line, but that's, you know, if you're going to start touching your septic, you're in a lot worse than what you want to be for a garage. Um, and with, I'm just going to pull the plan up one second, sorry. If you see on the proposed garage, we basically pushed it as close as we could to the deck without needing to or wanting to cut the size down to just move it over as it was constructed, I believe three years ago, if I recall correctly. Um, we are trying to take in the fact that we are fairly close to that side law line. So we cut a corner of the actual structure out to try and alleviate some of that massing that's close. Um, and in talking with the, the client, you know, if the board wishes, we'd be more than happy to put a landscape plan that goes down the side of there with, you know, maybe some mature arborvitae that would shield some of that massing on that right side. Uh, but obviously I'd leave it up to all you members, uh, to discuss. Um, and I'm not sure if we did provide potential facade renderings, but the client wasn't going to get too in-depth with wanting to design a full fixture if there was a lot of change that the board want. However, the structure that we would construct would comply with all other aspects of zoning and the, uh, bylaws for the community.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Do, all we have for plans is the one that we received at nine thirty this morning.
There was a plan with the original permit.
Uh.
That differs somewhat. One of the things that I noted, Mr. Mancini, is there's a note on the first, um, plan that we received. And it says that, um, both the house and the new addition are in floodplain quote E, E as in Edward. I have no idea what that means, and I do not know how it relates to conservation. Uh, perhaps you could enlighten us?
On the actual, um, on the floodplain, I, I did try and do the overlay, but couldn't get it to work even on the mass site. In this case.
What, what, what overlay, sir?
Uh, Mass DEP has an actual interactive map that allows you to turn on different various layers, wetlands, riverfront, flood zones, one through two, two A, one A. In this case, I don't believe a floodplain or any style wetland issue is here. I, if, so if that is a question, if you want to condition it, I'd be more than happy to provide the, the document that makes sure that that answers your question in its entirety.
You understand that we have to not only listen to your reasoning for why you should be authorized under, um, forty-eight, uh, section ten. But we have to show that you are totally different in topography, et cetera, of all your others. The second thing I question is, from the plan, there, it does not appear that the addition is any, um, anywhere near the piping going out to the leach field. There's quite a distance between the new construction and that pipe going out to the leach field. Um, the next thing is, I have heard various terms used as to what this is. Is this a garage? Is it a house addition? You're referring to it as an addition tonight. Is it an addition to the house, or is it an addition to the garage, or, or could you clarify, please?
Sure. It's an accessory structure that is detached from the actual primary dwelling. However, it would touch the deck in this case. Um, when we were discussing the, the actual septic line to the leach field, um, if you see the last, that plot plan on there, if we were to try and even, we thought about pushing the deck over. The closer we got, the closer we would be to the actual pipeline. God forbid, anything ever happened. You need a certain space beyond the pipe to actually excavate it safely. If you ever did have to, you know, hopefully never have to touch the actual septic lines.
Or you would have to build the deck such that you could access it?
Yes.
If necessary?
Yes.
Again, I ask you, this is a detached accessory structure.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, are you calling it a garage, or are you calling it a dwelling?
It, it would be a garage.
Well, you don't sound very positive.
I can confirm that it is a garage. Um, there is no habitable space for in any part of the garage. It's a hundred percent the garage. It's, he's an avid car collector. He wants to store his cars in the right amount of space. It will be strictly for personal use. There will be no business vehicles. It would just be his car collection.
So it is a garage that you're asking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Even, even though, um, it's being referred to as an accessory um, dwelling or accessory unit. It's also detached?
Yes.
Yeah.
If it's detached, why does it have to be in the position that it's in?
So with that, we have the, as you know, in Berlin, most of the properties have a septic system. So when a septic system fails, you have to have your secondary area. And without anywhere else we put that particular building, it affects the whole thing. So your secondary leach field back right, we can't put it there. Then your new tanks.
Excuse me, this, the leach field what?
The second, so when you design a lot, you have to have your original.
Primary, yeah.
Yeah, and then you have to have your alternate.
Yeah.
So if we move that building anywhere else, it affects the alternate.
Where is the alternate?
Uh, to the right of where it is currently. So it basically mirrors where it's at on the right side, if you're looking from Derby.
But it's also way back on the, I mean, it's nowhere near the addition.
That area, it's in excess of two hundred and fifty feet back on the lot from where this garage is. Correct, and if there was a relocation of it, if, if you look at the plan that, where it says existing house, you'll actually see the distribution chamber from there. You have to have a proximity that you can actually excavate and move. Obviously, if a septic system fails, there's a large area that has to be excavated, removed, and refilled. This is where it ends up coming in, where it gives our secondary.
But what we're saying is the secondary is a secondary leach field, correct?
Yes, and trunk line. So in this case, their septic does run actually far into the back. A secondary could be closer on the right side, which would end up being, if we say, say we tried to take this structure and move it almost directly behind the deck and tie it in maybe sideways, it wouldn't work because the structure of one would be too close to the existing septic. And God forbid, if they had to redo it and replace it in a different location, it would end up having to be rotated into that area.
I, I just, I, I don't understand because I'm assuming that the pipe coming out of the septic pipe coming out of the house would stay in the same location. It would go all the way back. And then it would be to the right of the, um, current septic system at the rear of the property. I, I, it, I just, I don't see how that.
There's.
The main point of that whole thing is, as we all know on the board and everyone on the call, the town floor hour is ledge, so we have to do our best interest for the client and where everything's going to be ending up. If we lock out our client with, uh, nowhere to put a leach field or anything due to soil conditions unforeseen, then what due diligence are we doing really for them?
So you were supposed to accept that the whole back lot there is all ledge?
No, I think, uh, the point you would accept would be that there is a financial burden to moving it anywhere else but where we currently have it lined up. We put it as tight as we could to the current deck, which he has invested money in. And, um, five feet out is where I can get an excavator in to get the foundation down to co-complacency. And to move it further back, you're just interfering with possible perk tests and everything else for the septic. So my, my main concern would be the septic, because obviously we all need a septic, and they all fail, and we're going to have to put a new one in. So I don't want to put a structure in that's going to, in the long term, affect that.
This may surprise you, but I live in a house that was built in nineteen fifty-seven. I still have the same septic system.
You're a very lucky woman, and I appreciate that, and I hope my septic system lasts that long as well.
We have no, for example, in fact finding and what, um, Mister, um, Royer has stated. You're telling us ledge, but you don't know that. And because you don't know that, we don't know that. Yes, if we could say seventy-five percent of the property is on ledge and, and yada, 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 maybe, and I'm not saying we would, but maybe we would be able to find that there is an issue um, with ledge and that that's one reason why, um, you're different from your neighbors. Which, again, you'd have to be able to say that the ledge on your property is not the same as the ledge around you. Um, I'm consuming a lot of time here. Do, do any of you folks have questions or concerns or?
Um, I just, I'm going to ask the rest of the board, do you have a copy of the original application email? Because I don't have it. So the only thing I have is what I received nine thirty this morning, which unfortunately is really blurry or low resolution, and I can't read anything. And so I don't know, I understand it's a garage. I don't know how many bays of a garage it is. I don't understand what the other smaller, um, parts of the floor plan shown are. So I, I just feel like I don't have much information at all with which to judge, and Leanne is making hand signals.
So if you go to mytowngovernment.org, the original, as an attachment, the, uh, it was uploaded there, the original application.
And Leanne had put a, a hard copy, uh, in the ZBA uh, box for us. That's where I got mine. Again, I'm looking for the petitioner to help us.
Mm-hmm.
Susanna, did you have any further questions or?
Not until I get caught up.
Okay. We need to be able to say why we, a variance is a very, uh, serious thing because it's not any kind of a temporary thing. It goes with the property forever and ever and ever. I was concerned at the way that the petition was written, quite honestly. Because it didn't say garage on it. It said addition. So what you applied for was in fact an addition. It didn't say garage, and it didn't say that it was detached. I, 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 I and when you look at the plan, it looks like it's attached to something, but we're not sure what.
Yeah.
Couple of boxes, and then there's the garage.
That's a landing with a set of stairs that you come down to the driveway. What we're trying to also not do is, if we were to take this structure and shove it further back, we're gonna have to introduce, you know, another three hundred linear feet of asphalt. For nothing, you know, we're in this case, it's directly off the existing parking area, which would kind of minimize that new, uh, you know, potential impervious area, which to me, I think is more beneficial.
This may surprise you, but there are a lot of homes that don't have um, concrete or non-porous driveways. Entire length of the driveway.
Yeah, which, which is definite item, but I, I'm not a fan of not having an actual hard surface, because God forbid a vehicle leaks. If it's just crushed stone, it runs directly into the soil. It's not, that's not at all a good item to have, especially when it has a little bit older cars, I would rather.
Do you understand the position we're in?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. What makes your property so unique? You cannot conform to the code. I understand it one hundred percent. Financial burden, yes, we, we could go and bore some holes and find out if there's ledge six inches down, a foot down. Sure, that's another financial burden on the client.
There's, no, 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 there's Geo Maps, okay?
A Geo map is just a layering. To actually find out if you can dig down, you may hit some shale where you can dig through it.
It's something for us to go on, sir.
Sure.
As opposed to your statement that it could be. Okay? Variances are exceptions from zoning, and we're supposed to take them very seriously. In other words, you are permanently diverting from the current bylaw. And in order to do so, there is a criteria that we must meet. And as the writer of the decision, should the board choose to authorize the variance, I am not in a position where I feel I could respond to the queries that are made in section ten. And I need you to help me get definitive answers. Now, it may be that the rest of the board doesn't feel that way.
Well, I, I'd like to say something. I never got a copy of the, that I could read or look at this morning. So I have no idea where he wants to go with it or anything.
All the copies required were submitted promptly with the appropriate timeline for review.
So long as they meet our needs, and what I think Mister Bartlett is saying is it's not meeting his needs in order to vote a variance.
Okay.
Am I correct, Danny?
Yes. I mean, I got something on my email that I could not make bigos uh, figure out where I was going or what I was gonna do.
Okay, what other items would you like to see, so that we're making sure?
Those items that are required in the bylaw for a site plan approval.
That's what I provided. I brought it to there and it was stamped in.
Shall I read some of them to you?
If you'd like.
Could we start with you reading the abutters list, please?
Reading the abutters list?
That would be correct. Could, could you uh, identify the abutters to the property, please?
You included that in the petition.
Correct, I think it's pertinent to my information who's on the abutters list.
All right, please explain yourself, because I don't wanna go down a list of abutters unnecessarily. Is there an abutter that's listed? You received this from the, not from us, you received it from our assessor's office, correct?
Correct, so would any of the abutters on this list be on the board?
No. If you suspect, if you suspect there is one, please state which one it is.
It's hard to tell in this format with uh, certain certainty.
All right, these are the members of the board.
Yeah.
Jim Royer, Jenny Bartlett, Ginny Zakatinsky, Susanna Roberts, um, myself, Lynn Ryan. There are two members that are not present. One is Pat Jackson and the other is Keith Suzie.
None of those names were on the abutter list.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Sir, could you please do some of your homework before you come before us?
Uh, yes, ma'am, definitely. I appreciate that. I will in the future.
I will say, let's see, we, do we have five members present?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. The reason I, I say that is, you understand um, that we need a positive vote of four people. We only need four people to hold a vote, but I wanted to make sure that there were five people in attendance. Now, are all of our members voting?
Uh, yes, I have questions now, um. Can I just?
Okay, you go ahead while I'm looking up the um, uh, site plan.
Okay, it's, um, it's hard for me to tell because what I received this morning is, is either low res or blurry. I'm not sure what the answer is. But it, the addition or proposed structure is a different shape than what was submitted, which I did go online and look at. Um, and it, the, what was submitted with the application does show that the existing septic system is a long pipe to the leach field way in the back of the property. It does not show the um, the backup location of the septic system, which is what I understand is your, your limiting factor. So I, I would think that if you're gonna say that the septic system is your limiting factor, you would need to show all of the aspects of the septic system. And the, the name that Kyle used is escaping me right now, but it's the, it's the other space. Which I thought, yeah, so I thought historically what it was, was you just had it twice as wide and you used in between, but apparently they do it differently now. Um, but anyway, that would, that would be something that's important. Um, the other thing that I can't see because I can't read it is on what was submitted this morning. It, it's not clear where it where the side yard setback is and where it infringes upon your structure. There's a lot of dimensions. It's um, a line that parallels your side yard property line that shows the setback would, would be helpful in showing where it's not conforming. So those, those were just my two statements. I, I don't feel like I can take a vote on this without that information.
Yep, so the, on that plan that showed the nine point nine, what you're looking for is just that secondary, what would be the build to line at the twenty foot mark
Yes.
imposed on top of the potential garage.
Yes, and if there, if there was um, a secondary septic location laid out, that would be helpful also to because you need to, you're trying to show a hardship of the septic system, but we're not seeing it.
Okay, if I may, I have in section of our bylaw twelve thirty-three. And there's some introductory things as to filing and how many copies you're supposed to give us, et cetera. But then in twelve thirty-four, it's required site plan contents. There's an introductory paragraph, and then it says the location and boundaries of the lot, adjacent streets or ways, and the location and owner's names of all adjacent properties. Existing proposed topography, including contours, the location of wetlands, streams, water uh, bodies, drainage, uh, swales, areas within the floodplain district, and unique natural land features. Existing and proposed structures both on the property and within two hundred feet of the property lines, including dimensions and elevations. The location of parking and loading areas, driveways, walkways, access and uh, egress points. The location and description of all existing and proposed septic systems, water supply, storm drain systems, utilities and refuse and other waste disposal methods, both on the property and within two hundred feet of the property lines. Proposed landscape features, including the location and a description of screen, fencing and planting. The location, dimensions, height and characteristic of proposed signs. The location and a description of proposed open space or recreation areas. The location and description of the proposed exterior lighting and the hours it will be in use. Written evidence from the building inspector, the board of health, and the conservation commission that the proposed use is capable of complying with the bylaw rules and regis- uh, regulations and statuses within their jurisdiction. So I do think that one of the things I would suggest to you is that you have a meeting with the board of health and see if they have any concerns.
Is that for site plan or review?
That's for site plan. That I I suggest you go to bylaw, which is online. Section twelve thirty-four, okay?
I've done a number of variances. I've never had to go through forty items for a variance.
Have you done variances in Berlin, sir?
No, no.
We have, yeah, so.
Yeah, I.
The company has for sure, definitely.
Yeah.
And I suggest that you run into the same thing that I'm listing. Is that not true?
Seems to be we're running into another issue, which would be a financial hardship. If I'm not.
That's one of the things you need to show.
I believe we showed everything that was required for the particular project. I think that the list you've provided is more of a grand scope for larger projects, not a residential garage unit.
May I suggest to you tonight, you can call us to vote tonight if you choose. Or you can make an attempt to address some of the issues that we have raised before we vote.
I would go with whatever Mister Mancini recommends.
So if I look at this, I take it that, wh- what, you're not asking for full-scale drawings, right? Mister Bartlett?
Well, like, I haven't got nothing as of yet that I can lay down in front of me and look at.
May I just suggest to you that the paragraph introducing those items that have to be included on a site plan says all site plans shall be prepared by a registered architect, landscape architect or professional engineer, unless this requirement is waived by the board of appeals because of unusually simple circumstances. All site plans shall be on standard twenty-four by thirty-six sheets and in electronic format and shall be prepared at a sufficient scale to show. I tell you that you need four of the five people available to give you a positive vote in order to get a variance, if that's what you choose to do. The alternative would be for you to request um, a continuance of the hearing, so that you can address some of the issues that we have raised. The choice is yours.
And I just interject here that um, the, the issue of financial hardship has come up several times. Um, do we have a spreadsheet that shows what that financial hardship would be? Something that shows what additional costs would be incurred by doing alternative solutions, such as like moving the deck, sliding the structure over?
Well, whatever, I mean, I don't know what all of it would be required, but um, I mean, if we're gonna claim financial hardship.
Sure.
Um, is that a thousand dollars or is that three hundred thousand dollars?
We would be encroaching into the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range additionally.
What I think Mister Royer is saying is your itemization of those costs would be helpful to him in making his decision. What is your choice?
I think our choice will be that we will continue without a finding, and then we will review and get everything you need to make the proper decision.
So if I were to ask for a vote by our membership to continue the hearing until next month at the request of the petitioner and provided that the petitioner signs tolling papers. What that is, is it tolls the date. That we have to respond.
So can I just go over the list really quick, just so that I know I, I, we're all on the same page for items?
That was my intent, is if you chose to, and it sounds like you're looking to continue um, the hearing and address the issues, okay? Then the notes that I have are, number one, the site plan is incomplete and difficult to read. Is every, anyone else have any other thought about the site plan being incomplete? And I have noted to you the section beside plan, what it is required. And again, we can waive, the, the board can waive it being done by an engineer, but it should include those things that are necessary. We have also talked about um, uh, ledge. If you're gonna use ledge as a, a reasoning, you need to prove it. By some form of maps or whatever. Uh, you need two letters, one from conservation. Basically, uh, what they would do is say they either are involved or they aren't involved. And again, what floodplain E is. Uh, and you need one from the board of health. You already have the third letter that's needed, and the third letter um, is from um, the building commissioner, and that was part of your, okay? So, again, meeting the requirements of the site plan, and if nothing else, making it legible. And we know what section we need to take a look at, is the twelve thirty-four, for what things we expect to be on it. We need to improve ledge, we need to boundary. And that is the boundary, the twenty-foot boundary. We need an identification of the blocks that are between the um, new structure and um, the deck. There's a couple of blocks there that are unidentified. We, are they stairs? Are they, you know, what are they? With, the next thing is financial. And that is your estimation of what costs would be involved at multiple levels, not just if we leave it where it is and we, you know, or we move it back, or whatever the alternatives.
From everything, from just downsizing the deck to removing it, moving it, I, yes, I understand what you mean.
A reason why you can't make the building smaller, and if you did, how much footage you'd lose. Okay, um, overall. Um, and again, the boundaries that were mentioned um, uh, previously, is, are there things that I missed, folks?
Well, if I may interject, Madam- Well, if I may interject, Madam Chair, it looks like there's two people in our audience that have their hand up that would like to be heard, assuming they may be abutters. Do we wanna let them?
Yes.
Say whatever they have to say.
Leanne, does it look like these are abutters or?
Um, I believe so, yes.
All right.
There's three hands up now. The only thing I wanted to add was that septic system.
And you know, like, one of the things that would be necessary is it also says you need to show where the water is. You know, because separating water and sewer is important. Okay, before we take any vote, let's hear from those that may be in the audience that wish to identify themselves.
All right, I'm giving Cheryl Trailer the ability to speak.
Yes, thank you. We are the abutters to the right, the ones that would be affected from the variance. And our first thing is the septic hardship. We don't feel that that is really a hardship. His septic plan, which should be on file with the board of health, excuse me, would show the expansion and where it is. And yes, it's the tank and the pipe, but that's further over on the lot. Quite a ways away from where his building would go. And then the second part is the property line is not very defined. And the existing property line, we feel right now, he has some of his land or dog fence and stuff on our property. So we'd like that defined, the actual property line. Because right now, he has given us various plans that show one foot off, nine foot off, different plans, the proposed addition.
I'm a little confused.
So it's really all over the place. We have drawings that are clear, but very conflicting.
I suggest to you that if you wish to submit some paperwork, i.e. some kind of a plan showing a different lot line or whatever, that you're free to do so to give it to me.
More than happy, yes.
Leanne is usually in the town office on Monday and Wednesday from nine o'clock to one o'clock.
Right, so I'm concerned now is that we're gonna have to hire a surveyor to actually go out and mark these lines, which we feel that he should be marking, but if we have to incur it, we'll do that.
So as presented, you're against what's being proposed?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Ms. Trailer, is it?
Yes, thank you, yep.
All right, I am giving Mark and Julie the ability to speak.
Yes, okay, hi, this is Mark Pratt. I'm across the street from Bill. I've got a list of things here. Mine do not involve the property lines at all. However, let me just get into the issues. So the past several years, Bill really hasn't used the residence for his business. And there's, I have no objections to that, but prior to that, there were deliveries, okay, that came in in the nighttime hours, you know, especially the early morning hours. We'd hear trucks backing up and the horns beeping. Okay, and the headlights from these trucks, okay, would be shining into our bedrooms, waking us up at times. So, I'm, he's not using it for his business currently. However, I am a little concerned that maybe some of those issues might start to creep back in in the future, so. I do have copies of some of the drawings that Cheryl was referring to, okay, and showing where he has an existing shed, okay, that is actually overlapping the property lines. And I really wonder about how that shed was put in in the first place, because we attended a ZBA meeting many years ago, okay, in which Bill submitted a plan for that shed. And apparently withdrew those plans. I'm not sure how he was able to build this shed, given that he didn't have any sort of variance for that, but it's like from what we can tell, very close or on the property lines. I've also seen the drawings for the for the structure itself. It looks very aesthetic, if I could only talk. It looks like a very nice building, okay, but it's quite large. I mean, it almost doubles the size of the structures on his property, okay? Now, we're gonna see that structure from the front, okay, and that really doesn't impact me that much, okay? However, given how big it goes back into the lot, you know, I'm a little concerned for my neighbors in that their views of those open fields are gonna be obstructed by this new building. So that's, you know, that's really something that's not going to affect me, but it certainly will affect them, so. I guess that's, those are my major concerns. The biggest one being, I do not want to see this building used for business purposes at all, so. I know it was said that it was gonna be for personal use, but over time, who knows what's gonna happen, so. That's all I have to say.
If I may, this is Lynn Ryan again, and if I may call you Mark, what was the last name?
Pratt. P-R-A-T-T.
Thank you. What was the nature of the business that you observed up until a few years ago?
Well, he has an electrical business, okay, in which he would receive deliveries for supplies. Okay, some of those trucks would be coming during the day, but the ones that we really objected to, especially in the wintertime, were deliveries that came in those off-hours when we're trying to sleep.
So, if it pleases the board and the abutter, I would like to point out that while the client was establishing his business and growing a business from scratch, he was able to then procure a property in Hudson, Massachusetts in a commercial district. And if that wants to be a condition to the build-out, we'd be more than willing to do so.
Yeah, I'm aware of his building in Hudson. And like I said, it hasn't been a problem for the last two, three years. I don't know how long it's been. But I just don't want to see it happen in the future.
Thank you for your input. Do we have a third person, Leanne?
Uh, no, I don't see any other hands up.
Can I just ask Mark Pratt again, in its current form, are you against what is being proposed? Oh, he's gone, is he?
No, I just had to give him permission to talk again.
Sorry, I just had a pop-up on the screen here. Am I against what's being proposed?
Unless it's modified.
Well, there's a number of things that I still don't understand, okay? I'm sorry, I'm not asking or answering your question directly here, but this thing with the septic system and the extra costs, I don't understand that at all, considering that moving that structure back a little ways, okay? Maybe he has to extend his driveways, you know, maybe ten, twenty feet. I don't understand how that impacts the septic system whatsoever, because the closest thing is the distribution box. So, now to answer your question, the building looks very nice, okay, but it also, the plan that I see shows that there will be a second level to this thing. Okay, I don't, it'll be a soft box-shaped structure. And so there will be some usage on the second floor of the structure. As far as the looks, yeah, it looks like a very nice building, okay, and it's not gonna stick out. But the question is, you know, is that what is really going to be built? You know, in the future, once he gets the variance, he could build anything as long as it meets code. Okay, I would perhaps be against, you know, just a plain old structure with a flat roof.
So, what, I guess what you're saying is you would like the plans that you have seen or that they are proposing included as part of our decision. In other words, the aesthetics of it, the building that you've seen aesthetically is pleasing, and you'd like just to say that it would have to conform to the aesthetics of the building presented.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty much what I'm saying. So, the other question I would have is what's gonna happen with the existing shed that's already in place?
So, what we do know is that our company has an excellent track record within the company, the community of providing what we put on plans. To add a stipulation to that of we will only build what we submit to this board is completely acceptable. We are nothing short of providing all our clients and the community what we have said we will do. And that's why we're the company we are today. On the end for the shed, the shed will be picked up via a flatbed and removed. The shed's going away. It's under two hundred square feet, permit not required, but in the grand scheme of things, easy answer is it's going away.
Okay, I did not know, so.
Well, I think it's good that you bring these out, Mr. Pratt, because these can be stipulations if we were to grant a variance.
Okay, that would be good.
Lynn?
Yes.
We do have another abutter with their hand up.
Mr. Pratt, is it okay if we go on to another abutter?
He's already gone.
He's in the audience.
All right, would you please put the third person in?
Yep, Adam and Megan Hopkins.
How you doing? Sorry, I'm just adjusting the volume at the moment. So we've seen a couple of different plans where the abutters at Seventy-Six Derby, right next door. Basically, with the two plans we've seen for the variance, one is showing the nine point nine, sorry, the nine feet, nine inches, which was submitted. We also see one, I'm just trying to find the correct page, but it's just over a foot, maybe fifteen inches. So that's another reason we have more concern of seeing multiple different plans. We don't know which one's actually submitted and how close it is to the property line, which we can't find any markers for, so where is it actually gonna fall? Is the existing shed actually over the property line at the moment? And what kind of issue does that, you know, put us in at this time where that has to be corrected as well? So we're just very unclear with what the actual plan is, how close it's actually gonna be, and has the builder determined the true lot line? Has it been surveyed? And can we see stakes in the ground? There's just too many variables right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. So your suggestion would be that the petitioner have some type of a survey done?
I think a survey. I think a survey needs to be done. There needs to be markers in the ground to actually prove which plan is true and which plan, because we've seen multiple, is the one being submitted to be built. Because there's a lot of variables here. Is it nine feet or is it, you know, fifteen inches or whatever it might be?
Could you tell me the source of the two plans? I know the nine point nine inch was with the original petition. Where did the plan that has fifteen inches come from?
It was shared by our neighbor Bill himself, who's the property owner. And it's an architectural drawing showing property lines, and it is showing the shed hanging over the property line. And the accuracy of it needing to be surveyed, I guess, is to be determined, but so far, it looks like it's much closer than, you know, advertised by the plan.
Does that shed show on the plan that was submitted with the special permit request?
Hmm, no, I don't see it. And also, sorry not to interrupt you, I don't see it on the existing plan that was submitted. But also the lines, I know it says not to scale, but it seems like they vary. Well, they are off by significant amount, according to the architect's drawing that was shared with us by our neighbor.
Do you have a copy of that original plan that was shared with you by the owner?
We could share one with you, but I don't have anything I could share with you on the screen right now.
Oh, no, that's fine. What I'm.
I could give you a hard copy.
Yes, could you, and again, Leanne is our administrative assistant and she is available Monday and Wednesdays from nine o'clock to one o'clock at the town hall in the office of the building commissioner.
Lynn, I just have a question. Why are we discussing something that is not part of the application?
Well, I think it's part of the application if.
We are only seeking what we have submitted. Preliminary plans throughout with the neighbors being discussed, but we are only seeking relief for the plans that we have submitted, which is the final set.
But if the plans that are being submitted, if those lot lines are inaccurate or haven't been properly surveyed, then.
I believe they are stamped by a registered land surveyor for the state of Massachusetts, so that would make it a hundred percent legal.
But there's no stakes in the ground. We looked for them. They're not visible. So nothing's been marked by a licensed surveyor that we can go out.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins, I think we'll take under advisement your request and you are at liberty to share whatever information you'd like with us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we have a motion in a second, I believe. Do we, Leanne, from before?
Yes, we have. Oh, no, we have the motion, but we don't have, no, no one, I don't have it.
So we need any further comment from members of the board?
I would just comment that after hearing the abutters comments, you had mentioned a couple of times that it's up to the board's purview whether or not we can require formal drawings or you know, less formal. And I would suggest that this sounds like we need actual surveyors' drawings or architectural drawings that are stamped, showing where the lines are and.
The bylaw says all site plans shall be prepared by a registered architect, landscape architect or professional engineer. Is that the case with the plans that we have?
You have a certified plot plan by a registered land surveyor in the state of Massachusetts, so yes. Checks the box there. Basically, a civil engineer. They just call it land surveyor. And it was stamped on twelve twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. And if pin marks are needed and as-built is needed, I'm sure we can definitely provide that.
Well, you have heard from the issues that the board has. We have itemized them to you.
Yep, I have.
There seems to be a great concern in the neighborhood as to where the lot lines are. How you deal with that is up to you, but I would suggest that we do take serious any complaints or concerns of abutters. That's one of the reasons we have a hearing, okay? Especially for something like a variance, which is an exception to zoning. Especially for something like a variance, which is, which is an exception to zoning. Do you think you can do what is required within the next thirty days?
Yeah, I I'm pretty sure we'd be able to get all these documents in a row and provide them. Would you want them just via email or do you also want?
Well, you you talked about having the land surveyed.
It's already been surveyed. Having it pinned is if you want it pinned, yes, we can have it pinned in the next thirty days.
I think that would be helpful to our discussion with a butters. And again, it's up to you, okay?
Yeah. Okay, but I don't understand why you, the pin marks are needed when the stamp plan is all you need. That would be.
We have always taken into serious consideration and actually very rarely have a butters appear at hearings with concerns. There are three of the butters very close at butters to this property that have expressed concerns. And it would be the wish of the board to address the concerns of those butters. Am I stating this properly, folks?
Yes.
Does the rest of the board feel this way?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take that as an acknowledgement. So do you do you see where I'm coming from, sir?
Of course.
I'm saying that, you know, you're looking for an approval. Are you going to be able to meet with the um, Board of Health, the Conservation Commission? Get your um lot line uh, defined in the ground? Um, deal with the ledge situation. I mean, are you going to be able to do all of that in the next thirty days?
Uh, I would love to. If we can't, I would uh hope that we would be able to file an extension with you.
What I'm saying is, when we vote tonight, we could extend it two months if that would be your choice.
Kyle, what do you think?
What do I think?
No, Kyle.
Kyle, sorry.
Sorry, I couldn't find the unmute button. I was having a technical difficulty. That's my apologies. The letter from Conservation, the letter from the Health Department are more than willing to provide to you uh, in the with within the timeline. Uh, as you know, right now, uh, land surveyor, uh, to actually come out and pin it would be a lot more and we can definitely work with the neighbors on their concerns. I think we addressed Mr. Pratt's concerns about deliveries and business locations. I mean, we've all, I mean, not all, but I also have a small business in town, so I understand the trucks and the lights and the, you know, you try to make something happen. So I understand that concern. We can definitely make that a condition if you'd like us to submit that. For everything to do with the actual laying of the plot lines, probably be the only variable. I can get you the G O maps. I can get you all that, no problem. Uh, my only limiting factor would be actually pinning the ground and I've already provided a certified plot plan. So if the plot plan and the location of the garage would be inaccurate, that would fall on the state licenser board with the land surveyor, who I doubt would try to even remotely subject his license to any scrutiny over a garage in Berlin. The other part of that would be I mean, it is what it is. I can, I can get you whatever you want. If you, if if we need to do sixty, if we, if we could do thirty and if you the board as a whole feel that the pinning is a hundred percent necessary to get where we need to be, then we are, I mean, we'll comply. We're here, we're not here to make enemies. We're here to provide a service to a client and work within the community under community standards, which we have done for almost ten years now.
Lynn, is the is the physically marking of the property line for the benefit of the zoning board or is it to um help the neighbors understand where the line is? Is it, is it for us or is it for them?
I think it's as much for the neighbors as it is for us. I think we need to know that to my mind, the neighbors have raised a question as to whether or not the map as drawn is accurate as far as where the lot lines are.
Right, and so that that is stamped by a state-approved land surveyor, which is a hundred percent legal document all the way to the court system. And actually staking the ground is, eh, I mean, if you want to have a group meeting out there off the record or on the record or however you have to do it for an onsite meeting with this particular board, we are more than willing to do that. But I will like to mention that, again, the stamped approved plot plan.
Let me just mention this on the stamped approved plot plan. You have one, but it the the drawing for the garage building on the stamped approved plot plan does not match the shape of the garage for that you submitted this morning.
That is correct. Um, we can add that later, but again, we're looking out for the financial interests of a client. Um, I will have you know, if you're not familiar, with every structure, there is an as-built shot surveyed line for a plot plan. So before my building can come out of the ground off of the concrete, I need to submit an as-built to the building department for approval. And I'm also willing to provide that to the zoning board for their blessing. And any financial uh, discourse on my end from poor planning would be on me. I'm, I'm telling you, I'm going to build the foundation at nine point eight. I'm going to build you the finance, the foundation at nine point eight. It's what I do. It's my business. This is what we do.
We tend to keep in our lane. Our lane is to authorize something to be a certain distance from the lot line.
Right, I provided you that.
Excuse me.
Okay, go ahead.
I have an opportunity to speak as chairman of this board.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We authorize you in the form of a variance to build where you will build. After it is approved, it is between you and the building commissioner. We are not an enforcement board. He is the zoning officer. So it would be between you and he.
Correct, as the enforcement arm of the board. Yes, I understand that completely. I'm well aware of the jurisdictions.
Well, then that is an issue between you and the building inspector. It would not come up at the hearing. The hearing would only deal with why it has to be some ten and a half feet short of the required um, sideline. Okay, I think we've taken in a lot of information. Do you have any questions for us? Do you understand what we are looking for?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mancini, did we confirm a computer file type and paper size? Because we've had a lot of conflicting issues with technology and paper.
Do you want it electronic and hard copied or are you okay with just electronic?
Have you read the instructions for submitting a permit?
Yeah, I basically went through a checklist of the actual uh, sheet that was on the website.
You provide ten printed copies, you and the so forth and so on, okay? You do understand that we cannot electronically nor even in printing form correctly read the plot plan that you have shared with us. So you could correct that. And I would suggest that you correct it in advance of the next meeting. It, I am concerned that even though you're going to remove it, the shed that exists on the property was not shown.
We can add that easily. That's not a problem at all.
I'll be curious to see if it straddles the lot line.
Uh, we were not involved or know the location of that.
I understand you weren't involved, but it does exist. Are you asking for a thirty day or a sixty day extension?
I would rely on the expertise of Mr. Mancini for that particular advice.
If the only outstanding item of the pin marks, would you deem that unsatisfactory for any type of motion?
I just tell you that we will take seriously any concerns of neighbors. How you address that, whether it's with the meeting with them or whatever prior to getting a signature from them or having them give you a letter of endorsement would not be a bad thing. Any of my colleagues feel differently? What is your decision?
Thirty days, please.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that at the request of the um, petitioner, he be given um a thirty, an extension to our next meeting in October.
October eighth.
October eighth. What time did we? We don't have anything else, so we can do this at seven o'clock, right?
Right, correct.
As of right now, you could be seven P M. Provided that you come into the office and sign the appropriate papers. And that would be by the petitioner, not by um, an agent.
Petitioner as in Mr. Tricia or petitioner as in me?
The per, the person who filed, and it was you, I believe, that filed, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I just making sure I'm covering the bases today. We want to get you everything you need.
Yeah, it it would be by the person who submitted the petition.
Right, so moved.
Is there a second, dear God, please?
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll make a roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Uh, Jenny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Um, Susanna, are you still there?
I'm here, aye.
Okay, uh, and I'm an aye. I will also tell you, gentlemen, um, just, I I shouldn't if you, if you're fully aware of of variances. We have a a maximum of three folks sitting on the panel, uh, sitting on the board at the time of a hearing. You need four positive votes. If at the time of the hearing we have four people, we can still continue the hearing. But you have every right to say that you would like to postpone it until we have five members, given that one of the members could possibly wrote in the negative. Do you understand? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Understood.
Yes, ma'am, that's understood.
Okay. We have moved the hearing um, to next month. We look forward to seeing you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the board's time.
Have a good night.
Goodbye.
Oh, how painful. Okay.
Do we have to vote to close the hearing?
No, we voted to continue, not close.
Okay, alrighty.
We voted to close the other hearing because we did in fact close it.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, what's next on the agenda here?
We approved the minutes. There's been no communications. Can we?
No warrants.
No warrants.
Under communi, all right, can we just do availability first? Who's available for next month? Are we all available?
I am.
Yep, yep.
Is there anyone who is not available? Oh, God, I'll even be here on my birthday. Okay, let's, oh, yeah, we don't celebrate them anymore. You know, there comes a time when you stop celebrating birthdays because you don't look forward to them. I I just wanted to share with you, if I may, under communications. Um, I attended, you didn't attend the meeting last night of the planning board, did you? Um, Susanna?
I knew you were going to ask me that. No, I went to Monday night's hearing for the town center. And so then I uh, made an executive decision not to go to a meeting last night.
Well, that's fine. I just wondered because I did.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for going.
Well, it it's got to do with the fact that I was having trouble with my phone line and I just wanted to make sure the Zoom worked, but anyway. They had several folks in Forty Four Boylston Road, Randall Road. Dillison Roy does a lot of work in our town.
Yeah, what number Randall Road, do you know?
Uh, I don't, but it was, let's see. Oh, it's a subdivision that they're going to do. And that's one of the things they were asked. They weren't giving a street address for it. They want to make four lots up on Randall Road. I'm sorry, Danny?
I think that's roads.
And then they had Twenty Turner Road. And that's basically, um, I guess there's a turnaround at the end of Turner Road that the highway department, maybe you know this better than anybody, uses. And they want to make it like a permanent extension. They had on the agenda, but they didn't say why it didn't come up, a continuation of review of two forty-eight Central Street. Now, that's across from me. That's up in back of the uh, doggy daycare there. So I was curious to see what that was going to be. Um, and then they talked about the bylaw rewrite. Um, they want to come in with a new rewrite for the um, overlay district of Solomon Pond. And they were vacillating back and forth. I almost jumped in, but I said, mind your business. They don't know if they, the only place in town supposedly that's limited industrial is the land that's underneath the Solomon Pond Mall. This was my take. And they are trying to decide if they want to modify the overlay district or if they want to um modify the industrial, uh, light industrial and have it be um lift the um, uh overlay district, basically canceling it. They're working with Marlboro and we know that's been going on for a long time. The new owners, I guess, of the mall are working with Sears, Pennies, and Macy's, all of whom own the land or own the building that's on that land. And they're dickering with them right now. That may come up. They're working with uh, folks. It may come up at a November town meeting, which, by the way, we're going to have in November. I guess they've picked November seventeenth uh, for a special town meeting. And that the warrant closes October sixth. So they're also wondering if they're going to be able to get something in there in time. May fourth, twenty twenty-six is going to be the regular town meeting. One of the things they were asking is to talk to the new owners of the mall and see if they're in no hurry and if they're in no hurry that they'd wait until the May fourth, twenty twenty-six town meeting. Uh, because the deadline to get stuff in for that is February twenty-third. So that's basically what happened. Now, one of the things they were talking about is the complete streets. And evidently you attended that, um, Susanna.
What did I attend?
Monday night.
Yes.
You talked about the center of town. That's what they call complete streets.
Yes, that is complete streets.
Do you have anything you'd like to share with us from Monday night? Do you have anything you'd like to share with us from Monday night?
The. The. Proposals were, there was two proposals, one with a sidewalk on the church side and one with the sidewalk on the residential side. Which uh or the eighteen seventy side, depending how you look at it. Um, the engineers recommend the Woodward Ave side because it connects up with the sidewalk that leads up to it that is on Carter Street. And also because it leads down towards the uh, the schools and the town office buildings, whereas on if you put the sidewalk on the church side. It does com- it is a pretty picture. It does complete the little circle of sidewalks around the church. Uh, however, more people are on the resident side that would use. They would have to cross the street to use the sidewalk. The other aspects are uh, needing a permanent easement from the church to put the sidewalk over there. Uh, there have to be pole locations. Um, and uh, they did show that there were some modifications at the end of Woodward Ave to make the streets all one width, where, as you know, it gets pretty wide at either end. There was talk about making it one-way, which would be coming off of Route sixty-two and heading up towards the library. That would be the direction of the one-way. There were some residents there that, well, not residents, um, there. There were some Berlin residents there that uh voiced a concern with where the crosswalks are located and that there was one in particular. They wanted to have the one that crosses where uh. Not the one in front of the general store, but the one that's closer to the blinking light. They wanted that relocated. And the engineers uh pointed out that there's not a, you can't move it without losing the line of sight, so the, there are guidelines for how much space you need, which is three hundred feet for a forty mile and or whatever mile an hour zone it was. Twenty miles, I think. Um, anyway, you need three hundred feet uh for a line of sight for a crosswalk, and if you move the crosswalk to where they wanted it, you would not have as much distance for line of sight, which could be um dangerous for pedestrians. So that was brought up. Um. There was talk about how many how many driveways had to be crossed if the sidewalk was on the side with the residences. And just my personal opinion is sidewalks always cross driveways. I don't understand what the problem is there, but. So, it I mean, if you look at Hudson, they, there's driveways everywhere. So anyway, so uh, that's what it was. They were gonna look into talking with the um church council about an easement. Um, but it would have to be given, donated, not in exchange of money other, and even if it was, it would have to go before town meeting for approval. Uh, and I bring up all of this because there is a time constraint for the money that they were granted to do this work, and so they have to start construction by a certain amount of time. And once the construction is done, then they get reimbursed. So they will lose those grants if it gets extended, and I talked way longer than I intended to, so I apologize for that.
We always appreciate your report, Suzanne. You're very exacting and your memory is excellent.
I'm going to tell my husband that.
But you do look very tired, so I hope you do get some rest tonight.
I, yeah, I've I've I keep disappearing because I'm cooking dinner um in the meantime, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Are we still recording? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to um.
Second.
Who is first?
Lynn, oh, oh.
Oh, no, 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 no. It was Jim. Didn't you hear Jim?
That was Jim? Alright.
Yep, and Susanna.
Okay.
And it's, ooh, this was a late eight fifty-seven.
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming you're all voting yes?
Yes.
Hi, yes.
Okay, Jim. Jenny.
Hi, yes.
Me, Danny.